Good evening. This is the regularly scheduled September 11th meeting of the Geneva Planning and Zoning Commission. I am John Mead, Vice Chairman of the Commission, filling in for Scott Stocking. Tonight, for the benefit of those in the audience, I am joined by Commissioner Michael Slivka, Commissioner Adam Matoskell, Commissioner Tim Moran, Commissioner Mim Evans, Community Development Director David DeGroot, City Attorney Scott Finson, and City Planner Matt Busing. This evening, the Commission will host a public hearing for Agenda Items 5A through 5E. As Chairman of tonight's meeting, I will guide the public and the Commission through our public hearing process, which is outlined on the back of the meeting agenda. Please see that page for additional details. The Commission will open the public hearing, and staff will present a report of their, a summary of their report. Commission members will first have the opportunity to ask questions and make comments. This will be followed by public comment and testimony regarding the requests. Audience members will be called on and given an opportunity to comment. We ask that you state your name when it is your turn to speak. If your comment has already been made, or your question has already been asked, it is not necessary to repeat it. We remind members of the public to refrain from varying off-topic and direct comments that are relevant to the requests being considered. Following the end of the public testimony, city staff will have the opportunity to answer questions and respond to any of the comments made from members of the public. Additional questions or comments may then be stated by the Commission. The public hearing may then be closed, followed by Commission deliberation on separate requests. In order to help with the quality of the meeting broadcast, I would remind all Commissioners to mute themselves, except when they are addressing the Commission. Commissioners are also encouraged to state their name prior to speaking and prior to providing a roll-call vote to better assist our record-keepers, for example, meed, ay, nay, or abstain. Rebecca, would you please call the roll?
Evans.
Evans here.
Holloman.
Matoskell.
Matoskell here.
Mead.
Mead here.
Moran.
Moran here.
Slivka.
Slivka here.
Stocking.
Thank you, Rebecca. We have a quorum, so we will proceed. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Any discussion or motion?
Move to approve? Evans?
Matoskell second. Thank you. Rebecca? All those in favor?
Evans.
Evans, ay.
Matoskell?
Matoskell, ay.
Mead?
Mead, ay.
Moran?
Moran, ay.
Slivka?
Slivka, ay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the June 26, 2025 meeting. Discussion or motion?
Moran, move to approve.
Slivka, second.
Thank you. Rebecca?
Evans.
Evans, ay.
Matoskell?
Matoskell, ay.
Mead?
Mead, ay.
Moran?
Moran, ay.
Slivka?
Slivka, ay. All right, that motion passes. Next item on the agenda is Item 5, the Public Hearings. Tonight, we have five. These are city-initiated zoning ordinance text amendments. The first item in the first hearing will be Chapter, uh, Point of Order. Is this one hearing and five separate actions, or is this five separate hearings? Thank you. I think it's technically as five separate. Okay, so we'll open the first public hearing. Item 5A, Chapter 12 Signs and Section 11-2-2, Definition of Words and Terms. This is a proposal to amend sign-related definitions and the sign ordinance to comply with content-neutral standards. Matt, do we have anything for the record?
Yeah, so I'm just gonna read a general, well, I guess I'll read a brief one. It'll be the same, but the contents of file for this application includes an application for a text amendment filed by the City of Geneva Community Development Department. It includes the following items. We have the Certificate of Publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on August 27, 2025, for tonight's public hearing. And then we have a staff report from the Community Development Department to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated September 11, 2025.
Thank you. And now, would you like to give us some background on this request?
Yes. So, there's more details in the actual staff report, but I'm just gonna kinda go through a basic breakdown of what we are proposing here. So, as John mentioned, this first item is amendments to the sign code. A little background here, so in 2015, the Supreme Court established in a case called Reed versus the Town of Gilbert, that local sign regulations should be content-neutral, essentially meaning that local municipalities should not regulate the content of a message or what's displayed on the sign. Instead, the code should focus on the number, the size, and the location of the signs, but not the actual message. So, Geneva, we're trying to update our code, make sure our sign code is in compliance with that, so we are proposing a couple of amendments here to Section 11-2-2, which is the zoning ordinance section for definitions of words and terms, and then to Chapter 12 of the zoning ordinance, which is the sign code. In addition to that, we also have one small section of the sign code where we're proposing amendments to the sign illumination standards in the historic district, and we can talk about those in more detail as well. To start off, we'll kinda go through the content neutrality portion of the amendments. Change the slide here. So, a basic breakdown of what we're proposing in the definitions section is we're modifying the definitions of a billboard, an A-frame sign, and a temporary sign. We're deleting the definitions for construction sign, direction information sign, downtown directional sign, and time and temperature sign, and then we are adding a definition for temporary yard sign. Again, we can kinda go through the specifics of those if we need to, but just kinda, again, break down the basics of what we're proposing. So additionally, we are mending, or proposing to amend Chapter 12, which again is the sign code. We are proposing to remove the downtown directional signs section. Again, this kinda goes hand-in-hand with removing the definition from the definitions portion. We're modifying exempt signs, which is a section in the sign code, by removing the regulations for construction signs, directional informational signs, garage/yard/rummage sale signs, historical markers, flags, and insignia, name and date signs, political signs, private property signs, professional nameplates, public interest signs, real estate signs, residential nameplates, time and temperature signs, temporary sign, and temporary signs for city events and public utility signs. So again, those modifications really are to just make sure that everything is kind of adhering to that content neutrality standard. And then what we are proposing is the addition of temporary yard signs, and those we are asking to allow up to six square feet in residential districts and up to 32 square feet in non-residential districts. And then we are also recommending to allow for any sign that does not exceed three square feet in size, just by right as an exempt sign.
A temporary sign.
Those are just, those are permanent, just exempt signs. Again, if they're under three square feet, we're just considering those as exempt and not requiring a permit.
Okay.
The second kinda portion of this is the amendment to, or proposed amendment to the historic district sign illumination code. Currently, the code only allows for external illumination, and we've provided an example here of what's called the gooseneck lighting, so you have kind of the exterior lights shining down on the actual sign. That's kinda one example. There's also, you could do something like spotlighting if it was a freestanding sign. And what the proposal would kind of add is allowing for flexibility and internal illumination options. So, these would include halo-lit signs, die-cut metal panels illuminating individual letters, sculptural layers creating silhouetted lettering, and standoff lettering using shadow from frontlit sources with halo or reverse channel lighting being appropriate. So, and just a little background here, so this was brought before the Historic Preservation Commission at their previous meeting. They recommended not to make any of these specific changes to the illumination standards, but they didn't comment on the content neutrality portion, they only commented on the specific section.
Matt, I just had a question. So, the historical ones, these are the ones that deal with internal illumination?
Yes.
And HPC doesn't want it?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So, it's kinda chain-of-command thing, so if they don't want it, can we approve it, or will they?
So, yeah, so they make a recommendation to the PCC. As a recommending body ourselves, the PCC makes a recommendation to city council. So if you feel like they're strong enough to recommend approval for it, even taking into consideration what the HPC has recommended, we can go that route. If you want to agree with what the HPC recommended, we could go that route as well. Ultimately, that recommendation will go to the city council as kind of our normal recommendations do.
Okay.
Do we get the benefit of any rationale for their?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, if people should have the discussion now or wait till he's finished his presentation?
Yeah, right, exactly. So, I mean, from my understanding, and I wasn't at this meeting, but my understanding was they just didn't think any internal illumination was appropriate in the historic district. They, from their perspective, it kind of messes with the character of the district, and they believe that external illumination is the only appropriate lighting source for the district.
And what was the city's, what was the planning department's rationale for thinking that it should be there?
So, so we had some, I think we had some interest expressed from different property owners within the district, businesses within the district, and then we thought there were some potential options that maybe wouldn't impact the character of those of the district and would allow for, again, some more flexibility in terms of illumination, to give those businesses another option instead of just the external illumination.
Okay.
But again, the HPC definitely recommended not approving it.
Okay.
Are these, sorry to go off on a tangent, are these examples of what you felt would maintain the integrity of the historical?
Yeah, so these are just kind of rough examples of what these different internal options would look like. They're not necessarily something that's found in a historic district, but this is what would, you know, what signs could look like. Yeah.
So, right now, could these types of signs be approved through a variance?
Uh, no, only, yeah, no, they could not.
And they probably exist outside the historical district?
Correct. Yes, internal illumination is allowed outside of the district.
Can I get a sense for how much interest has come up, and it's because of limitations on where they can advertise, so that they wanna do it this way, or is there a reasoning behind it?
I think there's just been several businesses, I couldn't tell you exactly how many. David, I don't know if you have a?
I would say maybe a handful.
Yeah.
It hasn't been like an overwhelming amount of interest, but it was something that we thought we gained enough requests for that we should take a look at.
Okay. Thank you.
I think that might be it, yeah, so that was the last slide on there. So again, I kinda just went basically through this, but if we wanna go into more of the detail, obviously, there was a lot of, you know, changes to the actual code being proposed here with both the historic district lighting and then also the content neutrality. So if there's any specifics of the code, we can discuss those as well.
Commissioners? Mim?
Yes, I had a question. On page two, under temporary signs, about halfway down, sign temporary, any sign banner valance or display, it no longer says advertising, and then with the list of materials and all, it seemed like artwork could get caught up in that.
Where are you, Mim?
On page two, halfway down, it says sign temporary and advertising has been deleted in front of display. I thought by deleting advertising and including display, and then including all of those different materials, it opened it up to perhaps some confusion if someone had some kind of artwork or something on display in a, I don't know, it just seemed like it made it very broad if it was a, by using display without advertising in front of it.
If we would consider that a sign, technically?
Yeah, could it be considered, does it make it less clear what's a sign and what isn't by taking advertising off of it?
So, the, I mean, the intent behind taking out advertising is that, I think the city's position is that that kind of is us mandating what it has to be about, what the message has to be, the content of it. And so that's why we're proposing to remove it. I think it maybe would be open to interpretation from staff on whether or not a certain display was actually a sign or not, or a piece of art.
Commissioner Moran?
Yeah, I, I thought the same thing, that the word advertising here, by its very nature, relates to the content of what's on the sign, and that's what the city is trying to eliminate, and everything else in the sentence has to do with the construction and materials of the sign itself.
Yeah, I'm just curious, Mim, is the word "display" what's kinda hanging up?
Yeah, it's "display" without advertising or something else in front of it, because to me, a display isn't necessarily a sign.
So it's almost like you would say, "Any sign, banner, or valance instructed of cloth."
Yeah, if you took away "display," I wouldn't be confused. It could go either way.
I may. It starts with "any sign," and we have a definition for sign as well. And that definition says, "Any object, device, display, or structure, or part thereof that is used to identify, announce, direct, or inform." So if a temporary sign, if it was just art, it wouldn't be identifying, announcing, directing, or informing.
But where's the, any sign?
I could go with that.
Okay. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Did we look at what other cities have done to comply or to address the issue raised in the legal case?
Yes.
Yeah. And are we approaching it similar to, not that we have to do it exactly like other cities, but we can learn from their approaches as well?
Yeah, the research was to look into how our kind of, you know, comm communities in the area have tried to address this and, you know, formulate our code in a way that A meets the content neutrality kind of portion, and then B is, you know, within the standard code for how our area regulates items.
And Matt, how popular has this been amongst other cities to?
I think it's been pretty popular. And again, it's a Supreme Court kind of mandate, almost, that, you know, municipalities need to have this as part of their sign code. And so it's something that municipalities are trying to kind of update so they don't find themselves in, you know, various legal issues here.
It puts us in a compromised position if it's not content neutral, and we try to enforce portions, and that this code itself is not content neutral, we have trouble enforcing any portion of it from there. Really, the changes that were made, Matt, if you could go back to the slide, kinda showing the new categories, everything that was modified, the political signs, yard signs, or real estate signs, all of those, as they're regulated in the code now, we're kinda limited to that six square feet on residential property, 32 square feet in non-residential districts, and then your things like no trespassing signs and time and temperature signs, directional informational signs, were all under that three square feet. So we tried to figure out what the regulations were, can we just find those groups, and it really came down to those three categories that all of those content-controlled signs fell into.
So what will we potentially see as a result of this revision? Will we see bigger time and temperature signs, or?
No, I think that's what I'm trying to say, is that from a regulatory standpoint, that you're not gonna see any changes.
Okay.
You just will have a content-neutral code that will stand up in court.
Yeah, the sign size regulations are in place still, but just us specifying specific sign types based on, again, the content has been removed.
I had a question, we're on the same page as Commissioner Evans, sign temporary yard, all-new. Why even have a second sentence in there? If the concern here is to deal with the content of speech, why add a sentence that tells you what kind of content you're allowed to have in the sign?
I had the same question. It seemed like that reference brought content back in.
Right.
Yeah, and the language we tried to use there was like "may include" to keep it vague, but I do understand the point of if we're removing those.
May include, but are not limited to.
Right.
You stripped content from the entire code except for the sentence.
Right.
Right, and if, again, yeah, I get that point. I think getting rid of that doesn't change the definition of the sign, I think that was just to provide examples.
No, it doesn't.
But again, that does provide content-based examples, so if we need to remove it, I think that's probably a fair, a fair item to strike.
Especially 'cause it's not limited to, so you haven't set up what it must be.
Right. Does the, I'm trying to just look here, a type of temporary sign placed upon, or is it written there? Yeah, so you think the first sentence kind of hits at the heart of the definition?
Yeah, I think the first sentence does what you wanted to, I think the second sentence just takes you back into the content question.
Sure, I think it's fair.
I have a question, it's a little bit off-topic, maybe not, under, on page three, under purpose, it talks about, while at the same time respecting First Amendment rights of citizens, merchants, and property owners, what do we lean into if someone decides to put on their sign something offensive or?
Yeah, I think, and I, maybe Scott, you could speak to maybe the legality of it. I think if it is so offensive, that wouldn't be allowed, but in the, I don't know.
And how do we not allow that?
Yeah, I don't, I haven't done any research, but my gut is, if it's offensive, all the more reason to allow it. That's the whole point. And so.
Of the Supreme Court's decisions?
Well, First, yeah, First Amendment. I mean, the idea is that you can yell, I mean, there are certainly limitations, sorry. There are limitations, I mean, sort of the one is if you put, you know, yelling fire in a movie theater is the one that sort of talks about in law school. So what those parameters are, it would depend, but I think I'd be hard-pressed to figure out how a sign would have, regardless of how offensive it is, how a sign would cause the sort of panic that you're concerned about in terms of yelling fire in a movie theater. So I think what, you know, we would, what we would have to do is if there was something in particular, you know, we'd have to see if it was violating some other criminal statute. So I mean, I could imagine a sign that had certain content on it that violated child pornography or violated, you know, something along those lines.
That is regulated, yeah.
Yeah, but then, you know, the court has sort of spoken to it, so I think we'd have to, I don't wanna sound like the definition of pornography will know it when we see it, but it's, but I do think that there, I think we would be looking to other statutory considerations in terms of whether or not particular speech is run so foul of whatever that it creates a different legal.
And that's not necessarily content, but that's just the message in itself.
Well, no, it's the content. I mean, the content neutral is, basically, the idea is that the government shouldn't be coming in and saying to any citizen, "You can say this, or you can't say that." And typically, the more offensive it is, sort of the more defensive we want to be under the First Amendment of that content, subject to certain limited limitations.
Right, right.
Which I, again, I think I would be hard-pressed to figure out what those would be in a given circumstance. But for anybody that's listening, I would have to look.
That's right, exactly. On page four, I just have, this is just, you've capitalized all the words in the first line, "Signs on landmark properties," and then lowercase "properties." Should that also be capitalized? I don't know why that's all capitalized. Is it, it's part of the title of the section, right?
Oh, I see.
So that's just?
Yes, correct.
Not me, I just, might as well clean it up for.
Correct. Okay, so section, yeah, let me find that.
Section?
So 11-12-2.
C.
C.
First line.
First line, capitalize, properties. Good catch.
On page 5A, at the bottom, number H, you've struck out the permit fee, shall we double for a sign that is installed without a permit? Is that because we didn't enforce that? Is that because we've never followed it?
I think that is the case, that we generally have not enforced that.
And our intention is not to, so just?
Correct.
We'd want the permit fee collected, not necessarily double.
Yeah.
Okay. So, under exempt signs, number, letter A, the new letter A, "Signs on public property for government, official government purposes," that doesn't reference content, right?
Correct, and there are some, I think the Supreme Court has ruled that there are some signs, such as governmental signs, that can still be enforced via content, but that's, yeah.
And then on the next page, you have a title, number D at the bottom, temporary slash, temporary directional signs. We've taken the word directional out everywhere else. In here, I think, haven't we?
Yes.
So my question was, why is the word directional okay here? Maybe, maybe it is, I'm not questioning it, I'm trying to.
Temporary directions.
You've had, you had a whole temporary sign section, so this is obviously doing, this is under exemptions, so maybe. Signs shall be permitted within the city's public right-of-way only, temporary signs?
Right, and these are ones? Well, I think these are ones that are, so if you see the kind of the first line where that struck out, it was, you know, essentially for events or activities that people place signs in the right-of-way for. But we removed that portion of the requirement.
You just talked about location.
But I do, yeah, the question of whether or not temporary directional signs in itself is regulating content, I don't know.
Right.
I think the general requirements, yeah, I think the other requirements in that, under that section, do not.
Right, I agree with you. I just saw the word, whenever, where else I saw that word was struck.
The title of the section, yeah.
Do we have a definition for that?
Didn't we, yeah, didn't we get rid of the definition for directional?
That was a downtown directional sign.
Yeah.
Okay.
I can check the.
Let's see here, so there was a direction and informational sign that we struck.
Because it's capitalized terms, it should be defined somewhere, right? So, John, what were we? I was here on page 5A. Everywhere else in the document, I saw the word directional struck, except here. And it's capitalized, so it should be, well, it's also just a title of the section, so maybe it's not a defined term. 5A, page 17 of 19?
Oh, 17.
17.
Sorry, that's too early.
No, I said 5A, and that's, that's, that's the item I mentioned.
I mean, it could be, I'm trying to think of how to maybe retitle it, it could be temporary signs in the right-of-way.
I mean, I don't personally have a problem with it staying in there if it's not a defined term, it just, you're saying, if somebody's having the auto show or whatever you're putting, something in the city's right-of-way that's temporary, that's, if it's ever challenged, you may have to take it out someday, I don't know, but I was hoping.
Yeah, I mean, now's the time to fix it, right? So if there's a better way to have it labeled, I think we should make that recommendation then.
I mean, there's not, there's not many other, informational, we've taken that out.
I think changing it to something like temporary right-of-way signs, or temporary signs in the right-of-way.
The issue's where it's located. Right. The issue is, is the duration, so it's temporary, and where it's located, which is in our right-of-way, right?
Okay.
I think that would solve it.
Does that sound okay, or?
Maybe change to temporary signs in the city's public right-of-way. So if you just go with what's the first, the first sentence there.
Sorry, Scott, one more time.
Yeah, so if you, if you look at D1, if you take that language, I would say temporary signs in the city's public right-of-way as the title, and so it's just describing?
The location.
Yeah, okay, because that's right, all this regulates are temporary signs in the city's public right-of-way. Okay, so that's what I would do.
Got it.
That's all I had.
Good question.
Another good catch. Another good catch.
And then maybe if we're going to do that, if we're going to, maybe somebody can just do a search, because if you look at seven, number D7.
Yeah.
No more than four signs for each of inner activities shall be placed in the public right-of-way.
Okay.
And then in nine, this is what people hate words.
Seven, remove.
Oh, yeah, it's also in nine.
Directional.
Yeah, just hit, just strike, if you strike the word directional, it reads okay. Posting of a, and again, strike the word directional in nine.
Okay.
Let me just see if there's any others. In five, last line.
To a directional sign.
Yeah, yeah.
To a sign or, if you, or placed in the public right-of-way, attached to a directional sign. Attached to, I think it would be attached to a sign or placed in the public right-of-way. I think that works.
Yeah, okay.
So Matt, you're kind of keeping a master list of changes that we're talking about, so when a motion's made, we can refer to changes or additions, deletions that we've referenced here in the...
I think that, I think that works, yeah. Might run out of room on my sheet here.
So we've talked about all those changes. What we still have to talk about, I think, is the historical backlit elimination and your thoughts versus the Historical Preservation Commission.
Yes. And I think just as the, as a separate body, I think we should provide a separate, you know, our own recommendation on what we think, obviously taking into consideration what the HBC kind of provided for us.
And you've, can you go back to that slide?
Yes.
No, back to, yeah, there's the gooseneck, and there's, okay, so. And that's an example of now we're going to allow three different kinds?
Yeah, so I mean, these are, again, these are just kind of general images, and I think primarily, we were talking about this before the meeting, I think primarily what this is allowing is essentially some type of backlit lighting for signs. And these are just kind of showing some options of what those could look like.
Is it possible to make, to set this up in a way that it would have to be approved, like allowing these backlit signs of some way with, kind of like the equivalent of a special use?
That's a good question.
Well, it all, I mean, it's all, it all goes through our preservation planner, because it's all permit-driven, right? So someone has to apply for the sign permit. That would then be reviewed by the preservation planner, whether or not it adheres to this code.
Yeah, but as a way we can set up the code so that it, so it isn't automatically allowed that they could have a backlit sign, that it would have to be on a building for which it's, was determined to be not detrimental? Because I can see where some of these aren't really in keeping with historic buildings, but there may be other buildings that are in the district that are not historic.
That might look okay if we could see a mark.
It might be all right, right. So I hate to give it a blanket okay or a blanket no if it's a way to do that.
I'm just curious, do you think this is something the PZC should be reviewing, or would this be something the HPC would have to review?
Or both.
If it's a...
Certainly the HPC, because they know what fits with different historic styles and all of that. I don't have any expertise in that area. So I would say it's definitely their purview. Whether or not we look at it also, maybe.
So Commissioner Evans, would your suggestion be that they be allowed subject to approval by the HPC?
That would work, that would work for me, yeah.
Which, I mean, they just recommended not to allow it.
Right.
Right. Well, but their membership changes and thinking changes.
I mean, that could be our recommendation, and then the council could...
Or it could be, we kind of have like a, we call it the review matrix for the Historic Preservation Commission, where some things are reviewed administratively by staff, other things require commission approval. So it could be that it's allowed in the historic district, subject to review by the commission, a higher level of review. Typically, signs are reviewed at an administrative level.
That'd be all right. I just don't feel like it should be a blanket okay, because I think they could go up on buildings for which it would be inappropriate.
And to your point, they might see one that looks, wow, that's backlit, but it looks, it respects the area and the surroundings versus something else that's more of an intrusion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Moran.
I don't like this item being called at this time. This is a review of language changes. There's nothing substantive in here, except this. I think this item should be its own agenda item on a different night with the public notified, and let's get some public comment on this. Here, it's buried in a bunch of red lettering, language changes, and I think people who might have an interest in commenting on this are unaware of it. So I would move to strike it.
It's, it's, it's most likely to occur on or around Third Street and State Street, right? So you're thinking of a scenario where property owners in those areas are notified, because there was no notification for tonight's hearing, right?
So we don't send out, yeah, I mean, we send out the legal notice, which is posted in the newspaper, but...
And I'm not suggesting they get individualized notice. All I'm suggesting is that this can be a separate agenda item, spelled out as to what it is we're going to talk about, as opposed to how it went out tonight, where it's just one of numerous language changes, and it's not. It's a substantive discussion.
Right. That's a good point. What are your thoughts on that?
I don't have any objection to that.
I mean, I think it, it might be, it might be worthwhile to hear, to hear both sides of the issue, the, the people in the district, that, what their reasons are, and, you know, how much support there is for it.
Right.
I think it's a good idea. It is different than everything else that's being changed.
My only comment is this would, it would have to go back to the HPC again, and I don't know that anything would necessarily be different from their opinion.
You mean before the next hearing? Is what you're saying?
Right, they would have to re-review it as part of just the general process.
Right, and we'd expect the same answer.
Right, they would expect the same.
But we would have a single agenda item for...
Yes, yeah.
Backlit signing in historical districts.
Right.
That would be...
What if we continued the hearing, sorry, Mr. Chairman, what if we were to, this isn't technically right, because it's not, it's one question, but what if we were to divide the matter? So we approve, we advance the portion other than that, and then we continue the hearing with respect to that part of it? I, I mean, I think, I would just say recommend denial at this time, and we can renotice it at a future date when we have an interest in hand that maybe wants to speak to the issue.
So, so rather than pulling it from this request, the change, you'd recommend denying?
Yeah, I don't know when we would bring it back.
Yeah.
So leaving it open-ended is...
I sensed that Commissioner Moran was thinking it would be a soon follow-on issue.
That, that was my assumption.
You know, a month from now or something, or whatever the proper notice period is.
Yeah.
I could say, like, we don't have an active interest right now, so I don't know that there would be somebody that would want to speak to it.
But the active interest is city staff wanting it tonight. Wouldn't that same active interest be there? It just would be a separate item. Do you see what I'm saying? It was brought forth because it was the city's interest to bring it forth. Isn't that, that interest would still be there?
Yeah, so you're just saying you want to call it out separately on the agenda, so it's clear to the public?
Right, right. I mean, you can see, yes. Who showed up to here to talk about language changes? Nobody. But we do know that there are at least a handful of business owners who would be interested in seeing this change made. But we also know that the HPC has said they don't want it. So I think it would be in everybody's best interest to at least allow for the possibility of people getting up and standing and telling us why they think it should change or not be changed. And we're not having that tonight, because there's nobody here, because we didn't really tell them we were going to talk about a substantive change. We told them we were going to talk about language change.
Because, Scott, would the appropriate action be to table it, if we're not continuing to a date certain?
What about if we, what if we did this? What, I mean, I'm not sure exactly what the best way to do this is, but for purposes of moving, it seems like everybody is in agreement that they want the rest of it to go forward.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, subject to the things. What if you, what if we, because you're a recommending body, if the motion is to approve it subject to the amendments that have been made so far, with the exception of the provisions dealing with this item, and that... That way, the council gets it, so they can vote on it. The council can decide, we can explain, or you can explain, Matt can at the council, or the committee, the whole, that this is, this is what the recommendation is, everything except for this part. And then they say you all were interested in maybe revisiting that part at a later date. It has to go back, but then at least then you would also have an opportunity for Historic Preservation to give their input on that. Does that sound, it sounds cleaner to me to do it that way than rather to try to divide it out, or, because all we're doing is making recommendations.
That sounds fair.
I've confused you.
No.
Are you able to draft a motion around that?
If Matt kept the scorecard.
Rebecca's like, oh my gosh, he never come again.
You can just reference the changes, amendments, deletions, as discussed, and then doing with, without that item.
I think it has the same effect, but that way, we're making a recommendation to council, and then council can decide what they want to do. If they decide to deny it, then we can bring the whole, we can bring that section back again in the future.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Right. Unless there's more discussion, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing, Slivka? Madaskil second.
Thank you. Rebecca?
Evans.
Evans, aye.
Madaskil?
Madaskil, aye.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Slivka?
Slivka, aye.
Okay. Is there any further discussion or motion?
Matt, cover your cheat sheet. Apologies for the handwriting.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. The motion is to approve the city-initiated zoning ordinance text amendments, which appear as item 5A in tonight's agenda, Chapter 12 signs, and Section 11-22, definition of words and terms, as set forth with the various red line changes, with the following exceptions. Sign temporary yard, that was... Do we need me to find the particular sections, or can just...
I think you could just refer to those.
Okay. Sign temporary yard, delete the second sentence of that. Section 1112-2C, first line is capitalize properties. 1112-8D, temporary sign in the city's public row. 1112-8D7, remove directional. 1112-8-D.9, remove the word directional. 1112.8D5, remove the word directional. And 1112-2...
This is, so it's, sorry, dash two...
Not be part of this motion.
Yeah, I mean, it would just be, so it would be two, um, four, e...
This is a historical preservation issue. Scott, what would be the correct language here?
I think you'd say, so you're going to make a recommendation to, to approve, sorry.
Yes.
You're going to make a recommendation to approve everything that Tim said, except for those items you specifically said would not be approved. And in addition, you recommend not approving the amendment to...
The historical...
Historic preservation, the back, the backlighting, whatever section that was.
And then just to complete my motion, not make a motion to approve the section dealing with internal light within a historical preservation district.
Yeah, I think that's close.
Subject to the findings of fact of step.
It's close enough for government.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Evans, second.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Rebecca?
Evans.
Evans, aye.
Madaskil?
Madaskil, aye.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Slivka?
Slivka, aye.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda will be another public hearing, section, this is item, agenda, 5B, Section 11-11A-4, off-street parking in the DCM and DRSCM district special provisions, proposal to remove the off-street parking requirement for residential conversions of existing non-residential buildings within the downtown residential vehicle parking permit area. Matt?
Okay, so, yeah, I'm just going to read the contents again. So the contents of this file include the application for a text amendment filed by the City of Geneva Community Development Department. It includes a certificate of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on August 27, 2025, for tonight's public hearing, and a staff report from the Community Development Department to the Plan and Zoning Commission dated September 11, 2025.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so, yeah, so this is basically a proposal from staff. We identify kind of a discrepancy in the code between the city zoning ordinance and then the city traffic code. And we'll kind of, I'll try to break that down here, and if, you know, again, if there's any questions on specifics, we can get into that. But the zoning ordinance, so Section 11-11A-4, requires that new residential units in the DCM and DRSCM, RSCM area, special parking provisions area, which is identified in the map to the right, any new residential unit there has to provide the required number of parking per Section 11-11A-6. So again, that's provide additional off-street parking if a new residential unit is placed in those districts in that specific area identified on the map. On the other hand, non-residential uses that are added into that area just have to maintain the number of parking spaces that existed on the site as of 2001. So kind of in contrast to residential, if it's a commercial use or an office use coming into that district, they only have to maintain the number of uses, they don't, or maintain the number of spaces, they don't have to add new spaces based on kind of our parking ordinance. And just some additional background, so this was originally approved back in 2001, and then it was amended in 2019 when we did our kind of downtown district update. So the traffic code, Section 7-4-14, and 7-3-7, has kind of a provision in there where it allows for any resident living within the downtown residential vehicle parking permit area, which is the area identified in red, to apply for what's called, again, a residential vehicle parking permit. And this was approved in 2020. And let me just get my notes open here quick. So basically, permit holders are authorized to park on the street or on the block where they are, where they are a resident of, without any regard for what the posted hours are for parking. So if it says only three-hour parking, they're allowed to park there for more than that. They can park there kind of unlimitedly, or without limit. So, and then there's some other regulations as well. So the only exclusion in terms of where people can't park is on both sides of Third Street. Permits are valid for one year, they have to be reapplied for annually. And then permits are non-transferable, so you can't get a permit and then give it to someone else with a different car. It's registered to your vehicle. A little additional background info, so both the DCM and DRSCM districts do allow for residential uses by right. It varies kind of per district. The DCM allows for units above the second floor, while the DRSCM allows for a variety of residential uses. But we found that parking requirements, specifically in this kind of downtown area, have often restricted new development from coming in, because a lot of times with these historic properties, there is not additional space on the site to put off-street parking, especially if somebody is looking to do a, like a conversion of an existing building. So therefore, staff kind of, you know, identifying this issue with the traffic code and with the zoning ordinance, we believe that off-street parking requirements should not apply to residential conversions of non-residential buildings. So again, it's, it's not a new, like, if a new apartment building was to come in, we wouldn't say, you know, they don't need to provide off-street parking, if it's, you know, taking out a demoing-up lot and putting in a brand-new building. But if someone's coming in and saying, oh, there's a vacant office here, we want to put a couple of units in here, they would not be required to add, you know, what would be normally required by our parking ordinance. normally required by our parking ordinance.
Can I ask a good question?
Yes.
So, this got me thinking, if at our last meeting we dealt with extending a driveway for one parking space for an apartment above a newly-built garage, had that building been in the vehicle parking area, they would not have had to come for that, because the new resident could have parked on the street.
Correct, yeah. So, in that instance, they are not in this area, but yes, if they were a property located within this area, they would have been allowed to-
Just keep it the way it was.
Not, yeah, not-
In that instance, it was not a conversion, it was new construction.
It was.
So they would have, they would have had to.
So that's a, yes.
So this is, this is a distinction for really just conversion of like office space or retail space to residential. It's part of the rationale there is that, you know, the parking demand for office space, you know, per the code is four spaces per one thousand square feet. So if you were to convert that space into a residential apartment, say a one-bedroom, that's one space, it's a much lower parking demand than the office space would be at.
Good. And so here, I'll go back just a slide here. So this is the proposed text amendment, it's to Section 11-11A-4, point A, point 2A. So the text would read, for properties located within the downtown residential vehicle parking permit area, again, that's identified in Section 7-4-14, additional off-street parking shall not be required if an existing non-residential use is converted into a residential use.
Okay, so conversion.
And then just for reference, we kind of just tried to overlay the maps here and show, so the, you know, the map on the right kind of shows exactly where the DCM and DRSCM districts are located within that residential vehicle parking permit area. So that is where this text amendment would be applicable.
All right, I believe that, yeah, that's the end of that. Any questions, your discussion by the commission? I have none. I thought it made sense. Okay.
Do we need a motion to close the public hearing?
We would, thank you.
Moran, move to close the public hearing. Madaskil, second.
All right, Rebecca?
Evans?
Evans, aye.
Madaskil?
Madaskil, aye.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Slivka?
Slivka, aye.
Did anybody make a motion?
Yes, well, we made a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, close to being hearing, okay, I'm sorry.
Now-
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and hopefully this motion is more coherent than my last one, this is item 5B for tonight's public hearing. Section 11-11A-4, off-street parking, DCM and DRSCM district special provisions. If I'm reading this correctly, the only amendment is Section 11-11A-4A subsection 2, adding new subsection A. And the motion is to approve that subsection A, reading for properties located within the downtown residential vehicle parking permit area, Section 7-4-14, additional off-street parking shall not be required if an existing non-residential use is converted into a residential use. And the motion is to approve that.
Thank you.
Slivka, second.
Thank you, Commissioner Slivka. Rebecca?
Evans?
Evans, aye.
Madaskil?
Madaskil, aye.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Slivka?
Slivka, aye.
All right, thank you. Moving on to the next agenda item in public hearing, would be agenda item 5C. Now, this is definition, Section 11-2-2, definition of words and terms, proposal to modify the definition of lot coverage.
So, again, the contents of the file, as with the other cases, includes an application for a text amendment filed by the City of Geneva Community Development Department. It includes a certificate of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on August 27, 2025, for tonight's public hearing, and a staff report from the Community Development Department to the Plan and Zoning Commission dated September 11, 2025.
All right, thank you.
All right, so, let me pull this up here. Okay, so this proposed amendment deals with our definition for lot coverage. Essentially, staff has received a lot of kind of interest and questions about how we enforce and how we kind of essentially interpret what lot coverage is. Currently, the definition reads, that area or portion of a lot occupied by all buildings, structures, and other impervious surfaces. The impervious surfaces portion of that definition is kind of what's been called into question here. We've had a lot of interest from people who are trying to use some type of permeable paver or permeable surface, and typically, the city's kind of position has been that those generally do count towards lot coverage, but per the definition, it clearly states impervious surfaces, so there's kind of calls into question based on our enforcement and the definition, they haven't gone hand-in-hand. So we're trying to clean that up a little bit here. Yeah, and just, so, I didn't mention this, but staff believes kind of the intent of the lot coverage definition is to maintain a kind of percentage or portion of a lot as natural green space. And although we do recommend and encourage people to use permeable pavers, we don't think that necessarily maintains this intent of actually keeping green space. And so therefore, we're trying to kind of clean this up and keep it in line with how we've been enforcing the definition. So in the report, we talked a little bit more about these, but just to kind of reiterate, so here are some examples of some permeable innovations that we've seen come up. Permeable pavers, I think, are probably some of the most common. Artificial turf is also fairly common, and then grasscrete is a, I'd say, less common, but it's been asked about. And that's kind of a surface where it does allow for a certain percentage of vegetation or grass to grow through it, and therefore is semi-permeable, but the overall structure of it is still kind of, again, semi-permeable, so it's not completely permeable. And just to, sorry, just to speak to these again, so we've kind of run into the issue of people trying to, asking us, well, if we use permeable pavers, does that mean we can cover, you know, X number of square footage of our lot, because it doesn't count towards a lot coverage? And again, typically, we say, no, anything that's not kind of green and growing or green natural space still counts towards lot coverage. But then if you point to the definition, that's where we find ourselves in a kind of a tricky, sticky situation. So, just to reiterate, there's the current definition, and then our proposed changes would say, that area or portion of a lot occupied by all buildings, structures, walkways, and other improvements which cover the natural landscape. So we've kind of stricken impervious from the definition and just kept it as kind of basically, anything that covers the natural landscape and is not what we would consider natural landscape would count towards the lot coverage requirement. And that's why-
Commissioners, Commissioner Moran?
I understand the intent here and agree with it, and I know I can't commit the city to this, but if this is approved, I would not want to see the city start to double-back on people who have already installed these with the understanding that as impervious they were allowed.
Right.
That this is really prospective only.
Correct. I think that's how we would have to enforce it.
I would say, in my tenure, which is going on 17 years now, we have practiced it as any, anything that's not green and growing. We've, I think in the last few years, we've gotten more and more inquiries about permeable pavers and grasscrete and artificial turf, and it's made us look at the definition and say, well, yeah, I think technically you're right, but we should modify our definition to be consistent with our historic practice.
Commissioner Evans?
I agree with the changes made, I think it makes sense, but I would imagine that this lot coverage, as it was stated, may be the only incentive for property owners to use these more pervious, slightly more environmentally friendly materials, and I wouldn't want to eliminate all incentives. Is there another way to encourage that kind of material, especially as the materials continue to improve over time, which I imagine soon that they will, as there's more concern with groundwater and flood control and all that, and allowing the water to drain on the site?
Yeah, and I think as we, we tried to kind of write this in a way where, it's tricky balance here, because obviously when we're changing the definition to not allow for them, but I think if the city's position is, these do provide a benefit, and so it says, you know, especially when we look at stormwater runoff issues.
Right.
So we don't want to, you know, come at a stance where the city is not recommending these, but I think our position is that the lot coverage definition specifically is not the area to do that. I think if there is, that might be something that we have to look into, research more, if there are other incentives, or where to apply those incentives. But I don't think, at least from our perspective, that it would be through the lot coverage portion of the zoning code.
It's kind of competing objectives to preserve the natural open space. I think we can give them the lot coverage bonus. Like if, if you give us a spec sheet on permeable pavers, it might be that it's 40% permeable, so it only counts 60% of the driveway then, towards the lot coverage? I think that would be the incentive. And that's the argument that people have tried to make, to create bigger driveways and turnarounds, and we don't think that's consistent with the intent of the zoning district.
I, to piggyback off of Commissioner Evans, I had a similar thought. I guess this is the first time I've understood that the hierarchy of priorities is green space over stormwater management. I've always looked at permeable pavers as allowing water to drain on site. So I thought in the back of my head that there should, could there be some form of credit? Now I understand the hierarchy, but I still found myself thinking, is there, is it worth discussing that if someone were to use permeable pavers, and I don't know what the, if a permeable paver is 10%, 25%, 40% permeable, is there some way, or would we be open to considering giving some credit to a homeowner or a property owner for permeable pavers, but not to exceed, say, some meaningful and reasonable, maybe it's capped at 2% of lot coverage, or 3% or something like that? You can get a little bit more, but you, that still would incentivize people to use them, and they might, without seeking a variance, they could, they could then use them and do what they want to do with their driveway. I mean, I, I don't know what the right numbers are, I was just throwing that out there.
So, in a situation where it's, it's tight.
Yeah, right.
Maybe, yeah, within a few percent.
They can always come for a variance, right? But that's time and money.
Right.
Yeah.
They just, if there would be some credit, but then you cap that credit, if it's 40% lot, 50% lot coverage or something, it can't go higher than 53 with, caused by the use of pavers or something like that. Commissioner Moran?
So, are you suggesting that we send this back to staff and have them rethink some percentage, which makes sense to me, or even if we were to pass this as written-
Right.
-property owner can still come in and ask-
For a variance.
For a variation.
Correct. I, to answer your question, I'm not suggesting that it go back to staff and come back, I'm just putting it out there for discussion, because that's what I found myself thinking about. I can easily be swayed to move on as is, or to, depending on the preference of the commissioner, Commissioner Evans.
Yeah, I would personally think it would make more sense if there was some incentive other than increasing the lot coverage. And I don't know what that might, might be, something in fees, or, I don't know what the options, other options are, but the lot coverage, if, if it is to keep as much green as possible, then that's not the way to do it. And maybe there's a better way, and maybe it's folded in with something else that is more focused on environmentally friendly building materials, or, or other areas that are dealing with, that sort of thing.
I think there's, there's some natural incentive from a stormwater management standpoint, because where we have had them, like the library, for example, they use permeable pavers to reduce the amount of stormwater that they had to detain on site. That, that was a best management practice with that development. So if you have enough disturbed area, it might make sense, just from a stormwater management standpoint, that you don't have to add biospills or detention areas. But for your average resident-
Yeah.
Probably-
You're talking about site development versus a home, a home project.
Unless it's a very large home.
Right.
This is going to come up, say, somebody's in a home that's 10 years old, and they want to put in a bigger patio, say, this would apply.
Right.
And in that kind of a situation, I don't think the stormwater, I don't think stormwater management is really going to be of interest. I mean, it's not-
It's really 5,000 square feet of disturbed area or more is when that applies, so. That's, that's new home construction, new site development.
Right. I mean, if this moves forward, the staff can also be charged with, you know, just trying to think of something to incentivize. We don't want to disincentivize improvements.
Yeah, and that's, I think that's the internal struggle we face too, is, you know, we wanted to address this in some way, that the zoning ordinance could address it, and if there is some type of incentive outside of how the code defines it, obviously, we could try to look into that, but I think that would be maybe a separate matter, in my opinion.
And that could be that something, the commission would ask the staff to spend some time on it.
Right.
And report back, yeah, whatever.
I think we would be open-
The idea of like a cap up to a certain percentage on lot coverage, I think, might be a little incentive, so if a site is really tight, and they're proposing a new patio, new driveway or something, up to 2% more, whatever.
Yeah, I don't know what the magic number is, but yeah.
But that's something I think we could take a closer look at.
Yeah, I mean, you could even tie it into the existing kind of bonus structure that we have, just have another bonus along with it.
So if we approve this, we could see a follow-on within the next year of a modification to it or something, is that what you're saying? Or are you saying, taking it back now, thinking about it?
No, I think, I think we want to be consistent with our enforcement and our definitions. I'd recommend moving forward with this, but with the direction of the commission, we could take a closer look at incentives.
I think that works for me.
Yeah, me too.
Any other discussion?
I can say one thing, because even though they are, you know, it's a permeable, pervious material, I mean, it, it's still, it still is going to act and appear like a, you know, like hardscape does, whether it's concrete or impervious or not.
It's not going to be green.
So it still has an impact on the landscape, and I don't mean, you know, I just don't mean water getting through the landscape, but how it appears and how a site functions, and how, how it functions relative to its neighbors. So, I think that's, to me, that's the other side of it.
Yeah, and I think that's why I was thinking of something de minimis, like a 2% increase in lot coverage or something.
Almost as an alternative to a variation.
Correct.
Either go through the variation process or look at alternative materials.
We would have a chance to look at it. But it sounds like we're going to move forward with this as it stands, and you're going to spend some time on whether it makes sense to-
As Matt noted, we do have some lot coverage bonuses already built into the code, so we'd have to look at how that interplays.
Oh, really?
So you can't double up on lot coverage bonuses.
Could end up with an awful lot.
You go 40% to 50 all of a sudden? Right, so we'd have to take a close look and-
Right.
Because, so currently, the code does allow for, if you have a, something like an attached garage in the, in the back, you get a 5% bonus.
Okay.
There's other garage, it's mostly centered around where the garage is located, to allow for, you know, driveway space.
Right, true.
Yeah, we'd have, we could figure that out.
All right. Any other discussion or a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing? Evans?
Slivka, second.
Thank you, Rebecca?
Evans?
Evans, aye.
Madaskil?
Madaskil, aye.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Slivka?
Slivka, aye.
Thank you. Entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this is public hearing item 5C, Section 11-2-2. The motion is to approve the text amendment language suggested by city staff, 11-2-2, definition of words and terms, lot coverage, to remove the words and other impervious services, surfaces, excuse me, but with the caveat that city staff consider the possibility of some accommodation to continue to encourage the use of such surfaces- some accommodation to continue to encourage the use of such surfaces, perhaps at a percentage amount, but something short of requiring a formal variance going forward.
Thank you.
Second, Evans.
Thank you. Rebecca?
Evans.
Evans, aye.
Madaskil?
Madaskil, aye.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Slifka.
Slifka, aye.
All right, thank you. Carries, we're on to our last public hearing, which is items 5D and E, related to Section 11-4-8 through 11-4-8, A-12, downtown districts, proposal to correct an error regarding the setback requirements for lots that abut residential districts. And item E, Section 11-4A-6 through 11-4A-10, and 11-4A-12, downtown districts, proposal to correct an error regarding minimum lot frontage requirements. Matt?
Yes, so again, the contents of this file includes applications for a tax amendment filed by the City of Geneva Community Development Department, including a certificate of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on August 27, 2025, for tonight's public hearing, and a staff report from the Community Development Department to the Plan and Zoning Commission dated September 11, 2025. So, yes, so these two proposals here kind of deal with our, the downtown district specifically, and how the zoning ordinance regulates various lot area, or various lot requirements. So the first one is for Sections 11-4A-8 through 11-4A-12, and it's to modify the setback requirements for lots abutting residential districts. So right now, Chapter 4A, again, kind of provides the setback requirements, as all our zoning districts have, you know, various requirements. But 4A, for the downtown district specifically, includes a setback for interior side setbacks, and in some instances, minimum rear setbacks when properties abut single-family uses. So again, the word there is residential use rather than residential district. So staff kind of believes this was maybe just a kind of unintentional error. And typically, when we have a sort of transitional setback in the code, it has to do with abutting a residential district, not an actual use. In this case, the word "use" has been used here, which has caused some confusion, you know, kind of with staff and how we enforce it, and then with property owners on how, what is the requirement for them. So our proposal here is to amend that to, say, district, to hopefully kind of clean that up and make it, you know, clear of what is being proposed. And then our second tax amendment is for Section 11-4A-6 through 11-4A-10, and also 11-4A-12. And this is to modify how the minimum lot frontage slash width requirement is treated. So currently, 4A uses the term minimum lot width. Typically, throughout our Geneva zoning code, the term lot frontage is used. And staff, again, believes this maybe was an unintentional error when the downtown districts were created. We found that lot frontage is generally kind of the preferred term here, because that allow, or, you know, necessitates that lots have access to a public right-of-voy. It prevents something like a flag lot being created. And again, it's basically to maintain that new lots created are having access to that street. So it's just to change that term and to change, again, the residential district term here. So I think fairly straightforward, but if there's any questions, happy to, happy to take them.
Any questions? Discussion? Thought it was straightforward.
Move to close the public hearing. Evans?
Madaskil, second.
Thank you. Rebecca?
Evans.
Evans, aye.
Madaskil?
Madaskil, aye.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Slifka.
Slifka, aye.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to make a motion. This relates to public hearing items 5D and 5E, to approve the city's recommended tax amendments to Section 11-4A-8 through 11-4A-12, downtown districts, relating to correcting an error for the setback requirements for lots that abut residential districts, and to 11-4A-6 through 11-4A-10 and 11-4A-12, downtown districts, related to correcting an error for minimum lot frontage requirements.
Thank you.
Slifka, second.
Thank you. Rebecca?
Evans.
Evans, aye.
Madaskil?
Madaskil, aye.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Slifka.
Slifka, aye.
All right, thank you. Now you can tell yourself when this will come to city council.
Yes. So, yeah, so the intention here is to go to the October 6 city council meeting with these. Just to note, we do have, our next meeting is September 25. Those items will most likely also go to that October 6 council meeting. So those will, it's kind of a little further out, just to speak how the timing of the meetings worked out here.
Great. Next item is public comment. I seeing no public present. Will there be any discussion there, other business or updates?
Yeah, so a couple updates here. Again, our next meeting is for September 25. We will have a meeting on that date. And then the one following will be October 9. I am planning on having a meeting on that date as well, just to prepare for those.
Okay.
Second update, we are kind of officially starting our comp plan and zoning ordinance update process. Right now, we have an RFP out to kind of get some, some interest and hopefully some potential candidates to work on that, some consultants to work on that with us. I believe that closes September 19, the RFP. So we'll have an update after that. We'll kind of go through the interview process and staff review process after that RFP closes, and then we'll keep moving forward with that. But, yeah, it'll be exciting to get that kind of comp plan updated and zoning ordinance updated. I think that'll be beneficial for the city.
Great.
And last thing, I just wanted to mention this quickly. So the city, we do have a new city administrator. Ms. Alex Voight is now with us. She started last week. I believe the intention is to have her come to one of our October meetings, just kind of a simple introduction. So I would plan on that. Again, she'll just come briefly for the beginning and introduce herself to the commission.
Okay. Any property updates for us? The property on Peck Road, I forget what it's called, the townhouse?
The Prairie Grove development, it is, it's undergoing their final engineering review, and it's kind of underway.
I think I saw an email this morning, they just resubmitted.
Yes, they did just, yeah, I think.
I see trees are tagged and stuff, but there's been no site.
Yeah, yes, yeah. But that one's undergoing, kind of the final review still, for the engineering.
302 River PUD is beginning demolition. There's a couple of the structures have been removed already. Most of the trees have been cleared. So that project, we're expecting the permit plans to come in next week for review, so that construction should start this fall.
Yeah. The SAMP industrial, or MIF slash NWI, they're moving dirt out there. If you go kind of down 38 or Fabian, you can see what's going on there. But, yeah, they're underway with that development. They just submitted kind of final development plans for the first building on that site, so those are under review right now with the city as well.
I don't know if there's any other updates off the top of my head again.
Bullet Campus, we're in the process of filing, in our governmental agreements with Kane County and St. Charles regarding the extension of Division Street. So we expect to bring those forward this fall for approval, and that construction will continue. The Mill Ray site, there was a hearing in court last week on that. There was no ruling made. That ruling on the code enforcement aspect of property maintenance is expected to be made October 2.
Okay.
And the Geneva Crossing project is underway as well.
They're humming.
A few buildings up, yeah. They're doing a great job keeping that site clean. The second access point is completed now, so you can see that.
Yeah, it looks really good.
I thought that looked real nice.
The other one I was gonna, the Roosevelt on 30 East State, that one is, is under construction, too. It's kind of present. I'm sure it's been seen.
I noticed just today, as I was driving in, a public hearing sign on State Street in like 7th or 8th or something. What is that?
That'll be our next meeting. So that property, and then there's a property on Hamilton Street. They're kind of filing a joint tax amendment to allow for, essentially to allow for residential units on the ground floor in the DCM district. And then both of those properties are looking to then apply for a special use to get that, to have a residential use on the ground floor. But, yeah, we'll have more.
That's the September 25?
Yeah, that'll be the 25.
I won't be here for that.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you, John.
I will be for the night.
Yeah, we have that, and, yeah, that's, I think that's the, those are the only cases, those two. But it's kind of the same, it's essentially the same request for both of those properties. So we'll hear kind of two of the same issues. Great, that's all I got.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you.